And I'll turn this meeting over to Chairman Miller to run the committee.
Well, I guess we're...
There's a statement first.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, before we get started, I'd just simply like to recognize Kay, one of the two great staff members that I have. Many of you know that November and December are usually very busy months. We've had, we have lots of end-of-the-year things, you know, all the i's had to be dotted, t's crossed, you've seen a lot of it tonight. Adding to that, we had some crazy things happen in October. I got caught by a typhoon and held up. Kay gave up going to training. I'm very, very grateful for that, and so I want to recognize the hard work that she's done. And then she turned around and filled in for Wendy and for Kate while they were out representing the city on other things. So Kay's done a tremendous job the last three months, holding up the office.
Now, I think that Kay should come forward so that the city can record this event.
She, no, she likes to be the person behind the curtains.
All right, okay, no embarrassments.
Thank you, Kay.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're now gonna start the City Council Committee, the whole meeting, and we'll have the clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Brown, here. Hazen, Hershey.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
All right, first up, we have approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. This would be for November 25th, 2019, and the special meeting that was held on December 2nd, 2019 is your motion to approve those minutes? Or any corrections?
I'll move approval.
Moved by Bill.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion, corrections? All in favor of approving them, say aye.
Aye.
I'll pose same sign. All right, the minutes are approved. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, we have one presentation from Sister Cities Committee.
did a travel to France in November. We were invited by the city and Mayor Cooney, Pierre Cooney, to attend because he was very interested in continuing our Sister City relationship, but also it was very important for them to have the presence of representatives from America during the celebration. It was the 75th year anniversary of the dates of their liberation from Axis occupation, Nazi in Germany, occupation of their city during World War II, when the arrival of the American Army, Third Army, under George S. Patton arrived, and basically liberated several different cities and towns along the Moselle River. They consider that something that the entire, actually, nation of France celebrates very seriously, and so we were invited to attend, and several people of us, we had six people attend. We went willingly, we covered our expenses, and we experienced the friendship of the people of Tournville. So we're gonna have a slideshow here, which we're gonna open up. And it's gonna be this one. But this is also a PDF file, so I'll do this. All right, and then I can, I think I can do it this way. Right? Okay, very good. So this is just saying that we went between November 15th and 17th this year. Next. And we've been to Tournville before, we went in 2014, and we're revisiting the city. This is a picture of the city hall. So that you know where we are, Tournville is in the northeast corner of France, it's 12 kilometers south of the Luxembourg nation border, and about 24 kilometers or 29 kilometers south of the city of Luxembourg. And when we went in 2014, we signed a charter with the current mayor of that time, Anne Gromer, and we brought with us Mr. Kermit Harden, who was a World War II vet. So we received the invitation from the mayor, and were pleased to agree to go. The first thing we did as a group was we had an informal lunch gathering at Le Somier Restaurant, very excellent meal was provided, and we found that we could become friends with them very easily. That was followed pretty closely by our reception, an official reception, in their city hall building. A large group of the councilors and the mayor and the deputy mayors were there to greet us, and we were making friends right and left. One of the first things that we saw after the official statements of greeting were over, and by the way, at that time, certain gifts were given to us by the mayor to deliver to our mayor, and this, I'm gonna show you what they are. Whatever's inside. And, and we have some other things here, which I'll show you in a minute.
I'm gonna interrupt for just one second.
Go ahead, please do.
Because I wanted to say that this is a picture of the inside room called the Urbana Salon. They have a room in their city council, in their city hall, I'm sorry, which has these two items plus a couch. It's actually a really large room, and the title of the room is right outside, and it says Urbana Salon.
And this happens to be right outside the mayor's office, on that floor, the first floor, they call it. So then we were invited to take a walking tour, a historian from the community was guiding us, and so we traveled through, a walking tour through downtown area.
And I want to add one more thing.
Go ahead, do.
So we had some great deputy mayors who assisted us, there's 12 deputy mayors in Tournville, and they...
And federal councilors, quite a few, actually.
And a lot of councilors. The other thing they did was they actually put up these American flags on their city hall, just for us. They also had American flags on the bridge, between France and American flags, which I don't think we have a picture of that, but I did want to point out that they did do that for our arrival.
Right. The American flag and the French flag were seen together numerous times. So we toured the city, one of the most interesting structures is the Belfry, or we, I'd call it the clock tower, but it's called a belfry. And we also visited what is a museum, it's the Tour des Pousées, the flea tower, and it used to be the jail, or the dungeons, but it's been, it's a very curious building inside, it's got about 14 different levels, you have to walk up and down quarter steps, half steps, half levels, and it's now a museum, quite an interesting museum, actually. And then right next to it was one of the original town gates. And then we walked, you know, through the city, and we went to the large church, Catholic Church was near the river, which had just been renovated, they were very proud of that. One of the things that we noticed and was pointed out to us, that they have renamed one of their city squares for the mayor Anne Gromer, who passed away a year after their visit to the United States. They dearly loved her, and they remembered her by that. Do you want to talk about this?
Oh, well, this picture is for Bill, who asked us to look for bicycle infrastructure. So this is a boulevard, on either side of the boulevard are different directions of the traffic. So you'll notice that the parking is right off of the street, but then, in between it, are two big bike lanes. So the bicyclists are protected not only by the parked cars, but also by the trees there. I thought that was interesting.
Which side of the car do they drive on? I mean...
They drive on the same side that we do.
The right, yeah, as we do. So their steering wheels on the left side of the car? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, it is.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks, you know, I'm glad I could give you that mission, and thanks for the texts and Facebook messages during, while you were there, showing me all the bicycle infrastructure, I appreciated that.
It was a fun challenge to find all of it.
So there were a lot of ceremonial moments on our trip, and one of them was a gathering at the Place de Liberté. We watched what was pretty much like a review of the troops, and I think that was mostly what happened there, and there was some music, and we sang the anthems of both America and France about three times.
Six. We sang it six times that day.
Okay. And they don't, they're not shy about singing theirs, and so we did our best. We were then bussed to a nearby town, it was about like, I don't know, 20 kilometers north along the river, where it happened that one of the battalions under George Patton actually crossed the river. The bridges were shot out and bombed in Tournville, but they did create a plank bridge eventually. But one of the battalions crossed at this town, which is called Maling, and they had a ceremonial moments, and replaying at their city memorial. Do you want to do this one?
We had a American football demonstration, in which they handed out roles for football. And this is not soccer, by the way, this is actually American football. They have club sports there that play American football, and it was interesting, the game lasted, I think, for 40 minutes, so a little bit shorter than ours here.
It was kind of a demonstration for our benefit. So as the evening progressed toward the, we were arriving now at the large celebration, which is gonna be the signing of our charter, the renewal of our charter with the new mayor. Outside the bell tower, the band was playing music for the entire community outside.
And this was the Air Force, the United States Air Force band that was playing.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, we walked up the stairs to the first floor, they call it the first floor, it's really the second floor, and to their large assembly room, where they often hold public city council meetings, and the place was packed with visitors, and we were provided seats at the front, and I took a kind of a ceremonial role here.
This was also livestreamed on YouTube, the whole event. So this room was standing room only, from not only official delegates from the city, but also community members, children attended, you'll see some pictures of children in a moment. This was only for the signing, all these people showed up just for the signing.
Just for signing the charter.
Yeah.
And the livestream is on YouTube, and we'll be showing you a connection, a YouTube site that you can, a URL for that in a minute, but you can go there and actually watch this ceremony, it was recorded.
Perhaps.
Okay, great. So, of course, it started out with Mayor Pierre Cooney making an address and commenting. And it was all translated by Marie-elle Ecard for us, both the French and for us and the English for them. Then I had the opportunity to read a proclamation that was sent to me by Mayor Diane Wolf-Marlin, and we read that, and it was translated as we read. After that, there was a signing moment, and the lady that you see here in red is Elise Bouyer. She was the individual who originally contacted us in Urbana in about 2012, exploring the possibility of creating a Sister City partnership, and it took us about two years, and a couple people in our group who spoke French, before we felt we could be comfortably saying yes, which was timely, because then almost immediately, we were invited to go to France to participate in the ceremonies back in 2014. So, this is a picture of the document, which actually I have also brought with me. And afterwards, we were all invited up to have photo opportunities and have some nice pictures taken of the event.
So we have Kate here from the mayor's office, he's on the left-hand side from me, hopefully it's the left-hand side for everyone else, and then Wendy, who's standing next from me, from the clerk's office.
That's right.
They also participated.
Yes. Well, then, let's see, what were they singing? This young choir sang, I think, was the American national anthem.
Yep, they sang the American national anthem, and then the French.
Yeah.
This is the sixth time we sang it that day, so, you know, it's the end, but it was very sweet, and they all had American flags and French flags with them.
Really nice. And then Mayor Cooney brought out gifts, which are to be presented to our mayor, she also gave a copy to both Mary Alice and I. This is a very thick and detailed presentation, or book, with a beautiful binding, on the history of Tournville. It's in French.
It is in French. Study up.
And it's filled with wonderful historic pictures, and I won't show you all.
No, no, I just wanted you to show them.
Well, we also brought gifts, and one of them was a photograph of the U of I quad that was framed nicely and presented to them. This is a photograph created by Larry Camper Studios. And we also gave them a copy of our kind of commemorative 10-year, 10-year review of the Sister City program in Urbana, which has a large section in the center on Tournville, our visit to Tournville in 2014, and also two pages on their visit to the United States and to visit Urbana. So they were very appreciative of that. Well, the memory of veteran Kermit Harden was on the minds of the people of Tournville. And it was announced during the ceremony that the new development that they are going to be building on the east bank of the Moselle River, right across from the city hall, it's a new development, one of the streets will bear the name of Mr. Kermit Harden. So Kermit has now, will soon have a street in Tournville named for him. This is the respect that they honored him with.
Yeah.
We couldn't get over the strong feelings of respect and admiration they had for pretty much anything American at the moment. So here's a picture of all of the participants, the councilors, the deputy councilors, the deputy mayors, rather, and the children. This is most of what constitutes their public city council meetings.
And the children in front are actually, they have a children's city council that are all elected, so the children in front are the ones who have been elected. I think they just went through elections a couple weeks ago.
How about that? Well, then, we had a slight break, and we were all invited to a gala at the Château de la Grange, which was in a town which would be like adjacent to Tournville. This was a chateau that was owned by a Baron, a Dutch, a Duke and a Duchess. They don't use it currently, they have another place that they live in elsewhere, closer to Paris, I believe, and so they allow other people to use it, the city has used it for the evening, and it was incredible. That's the crowd in the main salon, which are lined up to listen to some of the speeches that were made. And of course, you find out that you have to make another speech, and also sing the anthems again.
So, I'm sorry, that's the seventh time we sang it that day.
The, okay, so I went, go back to that one for briefly. One, there were two veterans from the United States who attended the celebrations in Tournville that we got to know somewhat, and I never got quite the gentleman's last name, but his first name is Dominique, or Dan, he called himself, and I think it was from Connecticut, as I remember. And he was at many of the things and doing many of the, received a lot of moments of appreciation, and he spoke eloquently also of some of his experiences. And if you might remember Jackie Helfcott, he came here five years ago, he's their minister or deputy of culture and art.
I think he's public works director.
No, he's culture and art.
Sorry. So, all, you know, all of their deputy mayors are responsible for different departments, which is kind of interesting.
That's right.
How they're elected.
They're answerable to the citizens about taking care of certain situations in their community, and they have these assignments, and these are all appointed because the mayor, when he's elected, brings with him a slate of workers and appointees, so these are not individually elected like we are. So when the mayor gets elected, he brings in a team.
Like his cabinet?
Yes, it's like his cabinet, if you wanted to say that.
Basically, he's allowed to bring in the number, the percentage vote that he gets. So if he gets 50%, 50% of his slate comes in.
Yeah, and there is an opposition party, and we actually, I stayed on Monday night, and I actually attended a city council meeting for an hour and a half, and I saw the repartee that occurs between the mayor, as he was presenting his budget for the first time, with the opposition, who had a lot to say about his budget, but since I don't know all French, I just assumed that I could feel that there was not an agreement. So then, after the speeches, which you saw more speeches, and words and things like that, they started again eating, because there was hors d'oeuvres everywhere, and there was a beautiful band. And the band was playing American music, and, you know, we listened for a while, and after a while, people kind of warmed up, and people began to dance, and it was became truly a party, which the next slide, I think, demonstrates.
So Kate and Wendy are in the middle there, and then the mayor is the person who's dancing there, and then...
Yeah, Mayor Cooney and his wife Isadora.
Dennis is gonna pop up next.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, well, I was dancing. And also, do notice, I would say that this is like the ultimate expression of citizen diplomacy working on a global scale, when you look at the mayor and happy, what a happy guy this guy is. Well, the evening ended, and the next day, we got up again, and there was more military ceremonial things to do, so if you want to say.
So this gentleman actually is a friend of General Patton's granddaughter, and so he goes around and dresses up like General Patton, so he's leading in the army. It's very interesting, a lot of the French in this area have been able to scavenge these vehicles that were left behind by the Americans, and they take great pride in rehabilitating them, and then showing them in these different parades. So that's the beginning of the parade, and as you, there's, they have all the uniforms, you see little kids dressed up, it's quite amazing how much thought that they put into this.
These are the reenactors, and they have many reenactor societies or associations, and as a matter of fact, Brigitte is in charge of coordinating their activities.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's her job. So there again are the two veterans being honored, they sat right in front.
I was able to speak with the gentleman who does not have the scarf on, and his job was to ferry people across the river, because there weren't any bridges, so that's what he did, was he moved, helped move the troops during the war.
During the war, yeah.
Yeah.
He ran a boat across the river for them, before they built a bridge.
And then, this is a very, very loud cannon, they in fact came, walked around, and told us to close our ears, and I wasn't prepared, so I still jumped, and when the cannon went off twice.
Shot it off a couple times, yeah, it was fun.
And then, do you want to take this one?
Yeah. So then, that afternoon, we actually went and did a little bit of a thing at one of the plazas, which was being dedicated to General Patton. And after that, our group, we didn't really have that much to do with it, but we were there, present, and then we walked down toward the river, and there's a park along the river called the Park Napoléon, and in this park, they had prepared a tree planting, and this is a little pecan tree, I learned, that is being planted in the honor of the city of Urbana, and we thought that was rather impressive. We all got the chance to put a shovel full of dirt at the base of the tree.
And then, there was, this is the last night, so there was a swing band concert for all of the people who had arrived for the celebration, so it wasn't just the city of Urbana, we had, there was probably 150 people there, Americans and American family members, who were there to celebrate the liberation. Tournville actually was part of Germany during World War II, so it wasn't occupied France. So they were liberated from being part of Germany, which was very interesting. So, so it was a lovely swing band concert in the '40s tradition, and then, of course, we had an after-party, in which a very, very nice woman invited us over to her place, and she cooked us dinner. This was completely unscripted, so she just threw some food together and gave us some lovely wine, and then we had to wake up the next morning and leave, unfortunately.
I would say that, you have to know that, this lady was the one who owned probably the best restaurant in Tournville.
Oh, yeah.
And, and her partner, and they invited us up to their rooms, and then she said, "Well, aren't you hungry? Let's just throw something together," and she made a gourmet meal in about 20 minutes, and then, well...
I think we had different drinks for every single course that we went through.
And then there was a legendary bottle.
Then there was a legendary bottle, which I'm not gonna pronounce, I don't remember the name of it.
Okay.
It was very good, very good. Kate has the bottle.
An extremely expensive wine was opened at our honor.
It's empty. It was a very, very expensive bottle of wine.
We don't know. We're just guessing.
So my mother joined us on this trip, and my mother and I actually traveled home right after this, but Kate and Wendy traveled to Paris.
Yes.
So you'll see, the police department actually drove Wendy and Kate to the train station, which is what you see there. They have two police forces plus an army base in their town, so there's the National Police, which are primarily in charge of security, and then you have, they're the ones who are detectives, they're the ones who go investigate thefts and so forth, so it's a bit different than ours. And then they do have police.
Municipal.
Municipal police, and they have a lot of cameras in that city, I will just say.
And so Christiane was one of the deputies, and that's her job, is to manage the municipal police force. And Brigitte and Christiane were shadowing us and providing us with all kinds of help and friendship, incredible friendship throughout the whole trip. So we all dispersed in various directions with extremely kind and thoughtful feelings of appreciation for the people of Tournville. So we know that they're gonna be visiting us next year, that's already been mentioned and hoped, and they discussed quite a bit about wanting to develop levels of exchange between us, maybe cultural, maybe educational, so we're hoping to see what can be evolved. They talked several times about hoping to have student exchanges, maybe even if it was just three or four students, have the opportunity to go to France and meet them, experience time in their schools, and they know that there'd be students who would love to come to America as well. So these are some of the goals that we might try to encourage in the future.
Yeah.
So I'd like to now present the mayor with a few gifts. I'll come forward, and so everybody can watch the sign.
Television? We have that. I'll start with these.
You heard.
So these are from the city. And also this, beautiful book. I think we need to get sashes, like the French have.
I think we need to get sashes, like the French have.
Beautiful, we'll say this for a very special day.
So, these are also two booklets about the street of your city, a little bit during the war, and they gave us a portfolio of photographs. About 14, 20 of these, and these are historic photographs that were of, some of them are from the previous trip that we took, but also historic photographs from the war. So, this would make a really nice display in our slate games, perhaps, here in the city. And then, also, here's a modern, a modern book on your city. It's kind of an art book, pictures and photographs.
C'est bien.
Here he is.
C'est bon, it's good food.
Mary Alice, would you bring up that other box?
Yes.
We want you to know also that during our trip, the newspaper carried information about our events, and, for example, this copy has pictures of the previous day's parades and events. So, Mary, to keep on record, and I brought then, of course, for our mayor to sign and to return, we have four copies here of the actual documents that were signed in Tournville. So, there's four copies of it, there's a place for your signature, I think, up here. And, yeah, that's really excellent idea, actually. So, they'd like to have two of them returned, and they would expect then, when they visit us next year, to have a signing official of the ceremonial signing of the two that we have in our position.
One thing that, I just wanted to say, they also gave us a tour of all of their offices. So, we went to Public Works, we went to greenhouses, the city owns giant greenhouses, and there's flowers everywhere, which is just beautiful, Diane, I bet you would have enjoyed the greenhouses. But what was most interesting to me was a cultural center that they had just built, and they call it the Puzzle. And the Puzzle is a combination of library and video and digital creativity. And so, they have rooms for podcasts, they have rooms for VR, they have photography rooms. It's a beautiful building and concept, and it seems to be highly utilized when it's over there, so.
Yeah, it's also very kind of organically create, they have like pods, and they have caverns for people to study, and they have niches, they have complete video equipment for creativity. And I did give them a copy of our Sister Cities 10-Year Commemorative Booklet for their collection.
Thank you.
On Monday.
Thanks for listening, guys.
Thank you.
And I would like to thank the delegation from the city for representing our city so beautifully, and I wish I could have been with you. We were interviewing our Public Works Directors candidates while you were in France, so.
The timing was not perfect, but, and they missed you, I would say, but nonetheless.
We're looking forward to their visit next summer. I know it was a challenging and difficult mission, but you served us well.
All right, well, I have, that'll end our presentations, and I have two public input cards, one from Bishop King James Underwood, who does not wish to address the council, but would like it entered into the record that he has continued concerns about the sewer problems in the Dr. Ellis subdivision, and one from Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, who also does not wish to address the council, but wishes that her position be entered into the record, that she is also continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivisions sewer problems. Okay, Stanford Report, I think we've got one, Business and Development.
Good evening. I'm Steph McMahon, I'm not sure I've met all of you, I'm the new Economic Development Coordinator here for the city, or the new Libby, as people are getting to know me. And I left a packet for you of our Business and Development Report for November on each of your seats, and just wanted to go over a couple of highlights for you. The first one is that the business grant expansion on Philo Road is happening. That is in line with the city's, City and Mayor's Priority Number Six, to make Southeast Urbana an economic priority. So, we have updated all of our pamphlets and information to include the Philo Road, and have updated all of that to the city's website, so all of that is currently available. We've drafted a press release that's set to go out tomorrow, so the media will blast that out to let businesses on Philo Road and the whole community know that these grants are now available to them. And we are doing a targeted campaign to touch base with area developers and new businesses that were getting leads through building permits, and touching base with them to make sure they have information in these, on these grants in their hands. So, we're hopeful that this initiative that you all approved will lead to some new business development along the Philo Road District. The three larger projects at the bottom are all three major projects that are in the work for spring, and the next steps for all of those are in the hands of the developers at this point. On the next page, just a little update about downtown Urbana. This is my fifth week here, and since I started, we've had two ribbon cuttings, one at Stango Cuisine, which has expanded into a new full-service restaurant at Lincoln Square Mall, they had started as a station in the Food Court previously. So, we had a ribbon cutting there. Also, the Analog Wine Library hosted a ribbon cutting, which was a very nice event, great wine, really nice networking space, and they also have some private room in the back. So, if you haven't been there, I recommend checking it out. And then, also wanted to let you know, if you hadn't heard, Bohemia has pretty much doubled its space in downtown Urbana. The owner, Malia Hayes' brother, Doug Beck, is building furniture, so Malia has added home display and decor furniture into her line of products, and has a beautiful space in the back of the store. And she will be scheduling a ribbon cutting soon, so we'll be sure to let you all know when that happens. A couple of, listed a few upcoming events that are happening in the next month for y'all. The first one is the German Christmas market at Riggs Brewery, and I found out a little tidbit tonight that the wooden stalls at the market were designed by Norden, the German Design Studio, and one of the original tenants from, that is at Colab. So, the city's Christmas party is going to be there this week, so we'll all get, I'll get to check that out for the first time, and if you haven't been, I invite you to check that out also. Another one you may want to consider, which would be a great networking event with Urbana businesses, is the Urbana Business Association meeting on December 19th, which is going to be at the Urbana Country Club. But all of these are great events that, if you have the time during this busy season, you might want to check out. On the development side, there are several updates there, but one that has changed a little bit is the Best of Africa Grocery Store is moving forward with its second expansion. So, we are working with them on that at this time. And then, a couple of charts and statistics on the last few pages. The total square footage for all new construction, which is, includes commercial and multifamily, has, actually was above average, except for a large development that happened last October that added almost 246,000 square feet. So, if it hadn't been for that, which I'm not saying that was a bad thing, but our square footage would have been above average this year in that regard. On the single-family construction, the square footage is down, it's at a three-year all-time low, and that's something we'll be looking at in more in-depth as we work on the annual report for y'all, that'll be coming in January. Finally, the last chart that is on this report is the year-to-date home sales through October was also down compared to 2017 and 18, slightly up for the month of October, but down overall for the year. So, we'll be looking at all of that in-depth as we move forward. So, it's just a little update for y'all. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Stephanie? Mary Alice.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I know that you're new, but I'm, I did not look this up, and I'm wondering if you know the number. So, right now, the Gather is estimated about $30 million, the project. Is that the target when that project was approved? I don't remember how much that was supposed to be, and as I said, I realize you're new.
Right, I don't have that information, I don't know if you'd like Mr. Boyce to come and answer that, or we can get that information for you.
Well, if Brandon knows, then yes.
I think it's pretty consistent with the estimates we've been hearing all along, but this agreement, the city did not enter into a development agreement. And I don't believe any of the zoning or related approvals would have, you know, required a certain amount of money. The scale of the project is certainly consistent with what was originally envisioned.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions? I had a couple myself. Stephanie, nice to meet you. I know I might have been part of the impetus for this report, because I asked for it a few weeks ago. Could we get any more detail about the Landmark Hotel, other than it's in the developer's hands?
Our understanding is that the developer has until January 31st to close on the property, unless there is another extension of the purchase agreement, which could occur. We're optimistic that they'll close yet this winter, and we'll be ready to move forward in the spring. But as Steph said, it is in the developer's hands at this moment.
We haven't heard anything from them as far as concerns about moving forward with the project?
No concerns, and the kinds of questions we would expect a developer to be asking as they prepare to move forward on a project.
Okay, and then, what is the expansion of the African store? Are they expanding their grocery store, or to add more space?
Yeah, they're expanding that into add more space to the, closer to the 25 o'clock into that area, but they'll still have quite a bit of space in the back that's left open. So, I believe they're going to be almost doubling their square, good, square footage.
And it's going to be grocery-related?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yeah, this is on the south face of the building, and Mike Hojer, the property owner, also commissioned an expansion of the Glenn Davies mural there, which is kind of an African savanna and a village and a marketplace, I believe. And the space they're expanding into had previously been leased by 25 o'clock. Who initially had plans for a larger expansion, so they're going to focus on the space that they're active in, and the unfinished restaurant area. And what this also does is it lays the groundwork for Best of Africa's intended expansion into an event facility, which would be the next phase they would pursue after they not only complete the construction project, but operationally open the expanded store.
Gotcha, cool, that's awesome. And then, lastly, Gather, again, in the developer's hands, could we get any more detail on where they're at?
Well, the first thing we would expect to see happen upon close, which we expect to be any day within weeks, again, a lot goes into these, but council actually made an approval last week that was an important final step towards that, but what you'll see is if the buildings start coming down, or we get a building permit application, we'll know that they closed.
Okay, great.
For a demo, yeah.
Any other questions from the committee? All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, first up, we've got a couple of resolutions, one ordinance, and a approval of our meeting schedule for next year, and then a discussion of a meeting date at the end of this year or before Christmas. All right, first up is Resolution Number 2019-12-054R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Danville, Illinois for the purchase of asphalt emulsion. Public Works.
Thank you. This is pretty straightforward intergovernmental agreement that will allow us to purchase asphalt emulsion during the winter months, when our normal source is not manufacturing it, from the city of Danville, who has adequate capacity to sell it to us. And this will allow us to continue operating our spray patcher through the winter months, and continue filling those potholes as they pop up. So, I would ask approval of the resolution.
Thanks, is there a motion for this resolution, or any questions for you? Mary Alice?
I have two questions. My first question, is this the first time in the winter that we've been able to fill potholes, or?
Yes.
Okay, and so, is my math correct, that it's $2,200, which is expected?
Well, we're not necessarily going to purchase 800 gallons, it's up to-
I know, but the max.
Okay, well, now I'm going to have to get-
Well, you don't, you don't have to, I just wanted to kind of confirm that it was $2,200, and this is a new thing that, so this is an expansion of a service that we currently do?
Yeah, $2,200.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Bill?
So, do they have to drive the spray patcher to Danville to fill it up there?
I don't think they have to drive the spray patcher, but we have to go collect the material, but I don't think we do it-
Barrels or something?
Something like that.
Do you know how, like, once a month will we have to go there, once a week?
I can find out, I don't know off the top of my head, but we'll have another chance to talk about it at the council meeting, so I'll have those answers for you.
Okay, thanks.
Sharice?
Yeah, my question was, is it going to be stored there or stored here? Do we have to drive there when we need it, and how much do we get, and how do we determine how much we need, that kind of thing?
I didn't expect this level of interest in asphalt emulsion, so I'm not prepared to answer that, but I will get the answers and provide it.
Okey-dokey.
Dennis?
And so, this sounds like maybe a more useful and better technology for patching. Does that mean that whatever machinery we use for the hot and cold patching, are we still going to keep that, and are we going to use it also for various things, or are we, are we retiring some old machinery? What's the story?
No, this was, this was a new machine, the spray hole patch, the spray patcher. And so, we'll continue to do some of the more manual patching, but this is a way of a single person going out and, and doing very effective patching all day long.
Is it patching for smaller kinds of holes? I mean, is it more like servicing cracked pavements and things, or is this like a pothole solution?
It's potholes.
It's a pothole solution, okay.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd take that.
All right.
Oh, wait, hold on, Charlie's flagging me down.
You know, the four items here are all pretty boilerplate, three of them are related. You could easily do, send all four of these to a consent agenda next week.
Thanks, Charlie. Mary Alice is trying to rack her brain about how to make that motion.
No, 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 I'm just thinking of one of these items that I don't know if it should go on there, but that's okay. So, I'll move the Resolution Number 2019-12-054R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Danville, Illinois for purchase of asphalt emulsion, be moved forward to city council in an omnibus bill with the recommend-
In consent agenda.
Put in the consent agenda. With a recommendation for approval.
All right, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll do that, I'll second it, please.
All right, that's been moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Dennis. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, next up, we have ordinance number 2019-12-071, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Sections 225 and 228. Clerk, do you want to give us a rundown on what those are once more?
Yeah, thanks to our legal staff, we just simply have to put in the code, the switch from Tuesday, from Monday, from the first and third to the second and fourth Mondays. And while we're at it, we also corrected the little missing language that, that should a committee meeting fall on a legal holiday, it gets bumped to Tuesday. a committee meeting fall on a legal holiday, it gets bumped to Tuesday.
Okay. Is there a motion? Mary Alice?
I'll make a motion that we move ordinance number 2019-12-071, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Section 2 hyphen 25 and 2 hyphen 28 to the consent agenda with a recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sharice has got it. Any discussion amongst council? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, that motion passes. Next up, we have resolution number 2019-12-055R, a resolution amending city council rules and committee of the whole rules. Mr. Clerk, do you want to give us one more reminder on our choices here?
This is some, this is dropping the resolution on resolutions, rule number four, as, as we no longer need it. And it cleans up some other language. And it makes, it generalizes our committee of the whole to any committee of the council would follow the same set of rules.
I'd just like to state for the public record that Dean Hazen is very sad that we're going to be getting rid of the resolution on resolutions. Mary Alice?
So, I'm just curious, getting rid of the resolution on resolutions. So, can you just go over for us and also the audience exactly when we use a resolution on resolutions and why it is obsolete?
Okay. It came, I did a little history checking with Jack Waller, former city attorney, and it came about in the 80s when there was a constant influx of public demanding resolutions be passed on X, Y, and Z. A lot of it was anti-war protests and so on. This was before there were the Open Meeting Act regulations on public meetings and regulate, and the time limits and so on. So, they were finding themselves not able to get any business done. So, they, they created this rule so that resolutions had to go to committee first. So, we no longer need that because we have the Open Meetings Act define public input process and all that. And, and so, resolutions as they appear tend, and, and, and resolutions have to be placed in the agenda for action anyway on it, on the, you know, with the 48-hour notice. So, that's the other piece of the Open Meetings Act that didn't exist when this was created. So, so it really, it's no longer relevant. And we've been, we've been, we've had resolutions that we've had to act on, which we, you know, properly publish it as the, as agenda items with the relevant material prior to meetings that wasn't, that wasn't required in days past. Since that is required now, we have plenty of time for the public to, to act and for you to read on most resolutions. Most of the time, we will simply, you know, use the usual process of going to committee first. But occasionally, you know, we have resolutions, we have ordinances. We don't have to do that for ordinances. We don't suspend rules to consider an ordinance, but we suspend the rules to consider this res, a resolution that has typically less weight except for money time, except for money issues than, than ordinances.
So, typically with the committee of the whole agenda, we always see the resolutions and the ordinances on there before they go to city council for final approval. Right now, it's only occasionally when Dean gets annoyed and we have to suspend the resolution on resolutions. I say this because the default right now is that everything comes to committee before going to city council.
Right, yes.
So, is the default changing?
No, the default is not changing. This is simply, just gets rid of that rule that lets us just introduce new business as necessary. Like I said, we regularly introduce ordinances under new business as needed. And we, we have to go through this extra step on resolutions that we just don't need because of the newer rules in place via the Open Meetings Act and Public Input Act.
Okay. Any other questions for the clerk? All right, is there a motion?
Okay, I'll do that. I'll move resolution number 2019-12-055R, a resolution amending city council rules and committee of the whole rules forward to the consent agenda for approval.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Dennis, seconded by Sharice. Any discussion amongst the committee? Nope. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign? All right. And that motion passes, and we'll go forward with the seat on the consent agenda next week. All right. Our last voting item is the approval of the 2020 city council and committee of the whole annual meeting schedule. Mr. Clerk?
So, basically, we will provide a schedule indicating council and committee of the whole rules, committee of the whole meetings on the second and fourth Mondays, first and third Mondays in that calendar that, that you're attached here for your approval next week. So, I just ask that you send that, the, that calendar forward with a recommendation for approval and a start, and the usual start time of 7:00 PM.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move we send the revised calendar, which we shall see in time for next meeting, to the entire council with a recommendation for approval.
Would you like that to be added to the consent agenda? Eric?
And I would most appreciate for this to be included in the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Sharice has got the seconds. Moved by Eric. All right. Any discussion amongst the committee? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? That motion passes. And our last item tonight will be discussion of the December 23rd committee of the whole meeting.
This is informational. At the moment, there are no agenda items for next week. And.
Two weeks?
You mean the 23rd?
I'm sorry, the 23rd.
So, there's no meeting next week?
Yeah, there is a meeting next week. Yes, sorry. There, there are no agenda items at, at present time for the 23rd, so I'm just giving you a heads up. Per council rules, the mayor will be able to, to, the mayor or the chair, which would be, Mary Alice would be able to, to cancel that meeting if there are no agenda items.
So, I have the power?
Basically, yeah. The rules say, yeah.
All right. I will not be here personally, so I'm not going to miss it one way or the other. But we don't need to, do we need a vote or anything? Just discussion, right?
The mayor and, or the chair can, can send out that message.
Okay.
Once we, once we determine that there really are no agenda items.
Okay. All right. Any other items? All right, then we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.